Hey, Council, it is seven o'clock. I call this me and daughter. Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, we have roll call. Hey, Ms. Martinez?
All councilors present and a quorum has been declared.
Awesome. Good deal. Okay, up next, we have the agenda approval.
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, if not, everyone, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Up next on the agenda, we have citizen comments. This is the segment of the agenda to where we have anyone who's in the audience come up to the podium and make their comments. We do ask that you keep your comments to within three minutes. If you're still talking at the three-minute mark, I will politely ask you to end your comments at that time. Ms. Martinez, I usually take cards of people who are coming to make comments, but I don't have any cards.
I don't have any either, Mayor.
Okay, so if we can go to the Zoom participants, and if you don't mind, give them instructions of how they could raise their hands so they can be recognized if they would like to make any comments at this time.
Yes, sir. If you're on the Zoom app and you want to speak right now, you'll use the raise hand feature on the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, you'll dial star nine. Mayor, I don't see anyone choosing to raise their hand.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised either, so we'll go ahead and close this segment of the agenda and move on down to consent calendar A. Counsel Carson?
Mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar A.
Second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Real quick, just want to highlight for the public that on the item about the hotel, the downtown hotel by Mr. Patel, he is going to go in front of, tell me if I'm wrong, that he has to apply for the variance and it's going to go ahead to the planning commission first.
It would be decided by the planning commission, and so that is part of the reason we wanted it to come before council because staff will have to make a recommendation to planning commission, and we want it to have a separation. And so it's not something that would come before council, and this does not indicate if you are supportive of not or not of the concept of the variance. It just allows him to do that since we have not swapped land yet.
And I just wanted to highlight that because I thought that was important, that we're not just rubber stamping this whole thing through. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor V. Hill. We have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Okay, we could start voting. Think we're missing one. There you go. Good job.
The motion carried unanimously.
Awesome. Next on the agenda, we have presentation from outside agencies, annual update from outside funding partners, South Central Colorado seniors.
Mayor, I am not seeing anyone in the audience. I'm not sure if potentially maybe they had to do it through Zoom. So if someone is on Zoom to present for the South Central Colorado seniors, if they could raise their hand. I don't see a hand raised, so we will definitely follow up with them and reschedule this presentation.
Okay, thank you so very much, Ms. Sanchez. That brings us to the next item, Development Services Quarterly Update on Housing and Downtown.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council.
Good evening.
It is your quarterly update on housing in downtown this evening. I've brought a PowerPoint. So the first thing is projects downtown. It's been a little bit slow so far this winter, but we are very, very excited to tell you, if you want to go to the next slide, that the rectangular rapid flashing beacons that were funded before I ever started working for the city. The city manager wrote a grant and had them secured by CDOT, and it's taken that long to get through the engineering and permitting process, but they will be installed in April. So the Streets Department is taking over project management because it's what they do so well. They are going to be solar. They've been at our Streets Department since last fall, so we've ordered them and the grants all closed out, the engineering's done. So just a little bit of a hiccup. We have found out recently, though, that CDOT doesn't approve these anymore unless you do like an actual traffic study. So we got in right under the wire, and I think that's maybe part of why the permitting process took so long. So I know a lot of people are really eager to see these go in in our downtown. They are going to be at San Juan and Sixth and San Juan in Maine and then Hunt in Maine and Hunt and Sixth. So those are probably our two most dangerous intersections for pedestrians, and these will be down there permanently, and we will see them soon. We also continue to work with the engineers at Short Elliott and Hendrickson on the designs for the Hunt Avenue Cultural Trail. We received the 30% designs yesterday. So the little pictures are the Hunt Avenue Cultural Trail. We don't have any fun new pictures, but maybe soon. Second is funding. We haven't applied for any grants since the last time I presented to you, but we are collecting data for the activated alleys. So the Energy Impact Mineral Fund, which we've, as a city, always been so successful at securing, they have a new program called Main Street Live. We were, they actually launched two new programs. One is the More Housing Now and the other is Main Street Live. We were successful in the first round of More Housing Now for Tierra Zool, and in this round, we're going to be applying for our activated alleys for Main Street Live, and it's a $2 million cap. We probably will ask for the maximum amount. We're working on cost estimates now. We have all of the hard infrastructure cost estimates done, but we're waiting on electrical estimates, and XL Energy has been gracious enough to work with James Billings to get us some really solid numbers for what it'll take to do all the lateral undergrounds for the electrical systems throughout the alley. So we're excited about that one. Next, and then outreach and relationships. Still a lot of good buzz about the Valhagen clock. There was a really beautiful story in the Valley Courier about all of the really just dedicated people that have worked towards restoring this clock and a man who that was his life's goal. So I really encourage anyone who didn't read it in the March 29th Valley Courier to read it because it's a beautiful article. And then we did talk to Oscar's Restaurant. They have a tiny 25-foot wide lot that's kind of next to the Pink Elephant site, and we apply, or we offered for it to be included in the parking lot. So it's unpaved. We would hate to sort of leave it out of the parking lot because it would be curbed and it would somewhat make it a little bit unusable because it's so narrow. It'd be very difficult for parking, so at no cost to the owner of Oscar's, we'd be willing to include it in the parking lot, and then they'd be able to use it. So we did talk to her, and she seems receptive to that. So projects for housing. We were successful in securing the technical assistance grants from DOLA. So it's technical assistance for local officials toolkits. We've actually, it's been a program that's been around since the pandemic, but we've never applied for it before. But it's great. There's a company out of New York City that's going to be working with us on helping us develop a rehab program. So it's one of the highest level goals in our housing action plan. We've achieved a lot of the two lower level tier goals in our housing action plan, and these are the ones that we really weren't supposed to take on until we'd achieved those and we had more capacity. And so we do feel confident that now's the time to really sort of formulate what housing with rehab would look like in Alamosa. And then I think we all know that it's one of our greatest needs. Like, I think we know there's a lot of deferred maintenance on some of our older homes, and so often what happens is we have to deal with them through code enforcement when really we'd like to be able to offer incentives for people to help fix up their homes. And especially when so many of them are energy retrofits and simple maintenance issues. The goals themselves as written in the plan, that would be part of what this company will help produce for us, is actually purchasing and renovating rundown homes ourselves and then renovating, repurposing vacant and underutilized buildings that aren't necessarily for residential purposes. But all three of those things will be captured hopefully in this plan. And I do believe because it's a team of planners and financial experts and housing experts that there will be some element of outreach. 75% design plan review for Tierra Zool's complete because they are hoping to break ground this summer. Met with all of the division heads in public works so that they can review. They've been reviewing all along, but just to make sure that all the details are in place for when they break ground. We still continue to talk to the Boyd Architects about some of their stormwater issues. They own like half a city block, and there's not a lot of places for water to go, so we're just trying to be really creative. And then we did work with a local developer who's trying to develop one of the newer phases of River Trace and tried to get him some, you know, calculations on what infrastructure is going to cost, so he doesn't have to go into it blind. Obviously, he'll have to hire an engineer for the real estimates, but it's one of those services we try to provide for developers that kind of goes above and beyond because we use some of our estimates that are from other projects or from our own internal work within the city, and it helps people have at least a place to start when they know what a price tag of water and sewer and streets will cost before they get too far into it. Next, please. Funding. We did apply for 3.8 million for Strong Communities. This is for the Boyd Adaptive Reuse Project. We have heard favorably and unofficially that we probably will get a partial funding, maybe. Not to speak too soon, but we're pretty optimistic. It was the one that we had to actually apply for last summer to be able to apply for the actual funding, so this is the second time we've applied for it, sort of. And we're pretty optimistic, although we hear it's pretty heavily oversubscribed, so that would be why we wouldn't get full funding. And then relationships. I was part of a group that was a lot of representatives from Adam State University, including the president, the head of their facilities department, and some of their division heads, Sandless Valley Housing Coalition, the former Chaffa representative Jeff Ausley, and then a member of a local bank so that we could talk about what housing will look like at ASU. So it was a really good conversation where we talked about their campus master plan and talked about some of their needs. They have needs both for faculty housing and for student housing. And so we talked about some of their vacant land and all the possibilities they have there. It's kind of been a long time in the works, so it was good to actually have that conversation. We keep meeting with the Behavioral Health Administration regularly for Horizon Heights. There are funders. Keep talking to CRHDC's architects for their Tierra Zool project. We did meet with a local developer who builds, and I think that we made some really good progress on talking about doing some duplexes that would be for 55-plus and doing some deed restrictions there. So I think that it's a kind of a goal in our housing plan that we haven't been able to reach is sort of the older community. And if it could be someone locally and they could help us fill that gap in the market, it would be really great. And then I'm on the hiring committee for the new executive director of the Alamosa Housing Authority. So I mean, we did, I think, pick a candidate today, and we might be moving forward with making an offer. So I believe that is the end of my presentation.
Right, great presentation. I recognize the council members with the lights on. Counsel Krebs.
Thank you. Hi, Rachel. Just one question. Where's River Trace?
It's over by the high school.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Rachel, thank you so very much. Appreciate all the outreach that you've been doing. And in different housing meetings and Zoom conversation, you and Deacon make us proud. I mean, your name comes up everywhere in the work that they're doing. It's really huge, so keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Okay, no other lights. We're good.
You're not quite done with me.
Oh, okay.
I think if you want to introduce the next item on the agenda, yeah, Rachel's just ready for the next item.
Okay, no worries.
I have to waddle these days.
Get her steps in today, huh? Okay. Motion approving the San Luis Valley Habitat for Humanity Contract for Services.
Okay.
There you go.
So this is also housing adjacent. We do this, we've done this every year for many years. I think actually last year is one of the first year we've skipped. So the way that they have structured their fees is they pay them and then they need to be reimbursed, which is a little unorthodox. Usually people ask for the fees to be waived on the front end, but Habitat for Humanity pays them, and then they ask for reimbursement. And so because it works like that, we call it a contract for services. There's really no fiscal impact because we're just giving them back the money they gave us. And so it's $5,427. It was 1620 Edison, which construction's complete on, and it's just a thing we could do as a good faith partner because they're building housing in our community for the very low-income section of our housing needs, and they do great work for us. So I'm here requesting that we enter the contract for services, which is really just essentially giving back the money they already gave us.
Okay, Counsel V. Hill.
Mayor, I serve on the Habitat for Humanity Board, and I'm proud tonight to approve this motion to the contract services with the Sandless Valley Habitat for Humanity in the, for $5,427.
I'll second that.
If we could back up, and I apologize for this, that we didn't catch it sooner. Counselor V. Hill, we should probably have you abstain because you are on the board. So if we could just rewind that a little bit and.
Mayor, I'm a proud person, a member on the Habitat for Humanity Board, but I'm going to abstain tonight because I'm on the board.
That's what I thought I heard you say, Counsel. Okay, I think Counsel Carson has something he wants to say now.
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract for services with San Luis Valley Habitat for Humanity in the amount of 5,427 votes.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, if not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously with Counselor Jan V. Hill abstaining from the vote.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, under police. First reading, ordinance number 52024, shortening the cure and nuisance provision. Notice of, notice for nuisance properties owned or controlled by resident owners creating the nuisance.
Thank you, Mayor. Some of you on council may recall back in 2021 when this section was added to our ordinances to deal with houses and other properties that were repeatedly used, and we could convince the court were repeatedly used for illegal purposes. Typically, it's drug distribution or manufacture, but there are a number of other kinds of illegal purposes that are, that are addressed by that resolution. Prostitution, other kinds of community nuisances. And at the time that that section of the ordinances was created, council decided that it would be good to put in a 30-day notice and cure provision, the thinking being, as I recall from the discussion, that oftentimes one would expect that it's a tenant in property controlled by a separate landlord who is causing the nuisance, and the landlord needs some time to address that nuisance with the tenant, either through eviction or getting the tenant to straighten up and fly right. And that was the reason for that provision. We've had occasion to use it one and a half times. We're kind of in the middle of another process of using it right now. At both of those times, the property is actually, the nuisance on the property is created by the owner of the property. So what that 30-day notice and cure provision does is give the owner a free 30 days to continue on with the nuisance that they're doing. And some of the report that I have had from the police department, specifically the detective divisions who've been working with that, is that we'll get drug dealers coming from Ana Vista where they don't have a 30-day grace period and just move and shop and setting up shop in Alamosa for 30 days to take advantage of that. So the thinking behind this is when we encounter a situation where it's the actual owner of the property who is causing the nuisance, there's really no reason for that 30-day provision. You say, hey, stop. They don't stop. Bring them in under the, under a citation for violation of the ordinance. Or not, it's not necessarily a citation because it's more of a civil ordinance, so a summons and complaint into court. And that's, that's what this ordinance is supposed to do.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Suezón. Okay, counsel, Counsel Jan V. Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we pass on first reading, ordinance number 5-2024, and set it for a public hearing on April 3rd at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, Counsel Krebs?
Just a quick question, Eric. In the, in the background, it says it's in order to cure the nurse nuisance within 30 days before filing an action to have the property boarded up. Will that language, if they live there, is that language continuing? If they're just going to evict a person, is the boarded up part still relevant?
No, because if it's a. Oh, sorry. If it's a landlord-tenant kind of situation, then we'd still be under that 30-day notice provision, and the landlord could do an eviction or could tell us that they're in the process of an eviction and keep us updated, and there would be no reason to do the boarding up. If that's the way that the nuisance gets addressed is by removing the cause of the nuisance through the landlord's processes, then we're fine. But if, if it, if the landlord refuses to do anything, or if it's the, or if it's the owner, him or herself, who is the problem, that's where we move then to board it up for up to 364 days, even if they're living there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Jan V. Hill?
Just a quick question. Is one of the, you said there was a one and a half inch situation. Is the one, the house on the Vita?
Yes.
And if this wasn't placed before, then would that, would this whole thing would have gone quicker with that place?
Would have shortened it up by at least 30 days.
Thank you.
Okay, all righty. We have a motion and a second, and no further discussion. We start voting. Okay, Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, up next, we have City Manager Legal, first reading of ordinance number 6-2024, and ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alamosa to include a new Chapter 17 titled Guidelines and Regulations for Water Projects for Export Outside the San Luis Valley.
Yes, otherwise known as 1041 regulations. And Counselor Carson has been intimately involved with this process as well through his seat on the Council of Governments. What the Council of Governments has been spearheading is a valley-wide coordinated effort between all of the local government entities in the valley, counties, and municipalities to draft a uniform set of regulations that would govern projects that are designed to export water out of the valley. So if a project either originates or has to go through any local governmental jurisdiction, it would first need to go through the regulation, regulatory process provided by these 1041 regulations, which are designed to all function essentially in the same way, to look very similar. And I think most importantly, what we've done, and council has already approved an intergovernmental agreement and a designation of water, domestic water facilities and exportation of water out of the valley as a matter of concern. What the regulations do is set up a panel through the COG on which every participating jurisdiction has a voice. And so no matter which governmental entity, which county or which municipality a project impacts, every participating entity in the valley has a seat on that panel that reviews that application. So if there's an application, for instance, in Suawatch County, which frankly is where we've seen them, Alamosa through this intergovernmental agreement will have a seat at the table when this board considers whether that application meets the standards that are set out in these 1041 regulations. So to participate, Alamosa needs to have its own 1041 regulations. This set that's before you on first reading tonight has been prepared by Sullivan Green Seavey, who is the law firm that's been working with the COG to develop these. I've made a few modifications, but not very many, so these are consistent with those valley-wide template 1041 regulations, essentially setting up standards with which to evaluate a project that would involve moving water, exporting water out of the valley. Standards to ensure that there's no environmental degradation, there's no economic degradation to the valley. There's no other impacts, or if there are impacts, that they are adequately addressed by the project. So with that, if you've got any questions, happy to talk to you about it. It's a fairly thick and detailed regulation. It's going to go into the old and repealed Chapter 17. Chapter 17 of our code used to deal with some kind of land use provision that got subsumed by the new Unified Development Code, so it's just been sitting there empty, and this will slot into there very nicely.
And there is a slight change. The second hearing is to be scheduled for April 17th. So just take note for whoever makes the motion, please.
Okay, all right. So Counsel Carson?
If there's no questions, I'll make a motion. Okay, I move that we approve the ordinance 6-24, 2024, on first reading and set for public hearing on April 17th at 7:00 PM or soon after, as the matter may be heard. Is that correct?
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, up next, we have committed reports. Do we have anyone with committed reports today? Counselor Hensley, then Counselor Jamie Dominguez, and then Counselor Jackie V. Hill.
All right, well, I have two. So last week I had marketing board, marketing tourism board. Real excited, lots of different things. So first of all, it's that time of the year that we gave out over $79,000 for different grants, for different activities and helping the marketing and promotional endeavors for all these activities, so that was really exciting. We are getting ready for our We Love Our National Parks Month, and so lots of work, lots of activities, things like that. I know a lot of Save-A-Dates have been sort of posted on social media and spread around. If you've noticed, when you drive by the parking that is by the Welcome Center, there's 12 blank murals up there. And so on April 7th, it is set up that there is different plans for each mural, and it's going to be similar to what we did for the bridge here, sort of color by number, color in. And so with that encouraging, everybody in the community, children, all ages, anything to come help so they, you have your mark on those murals. They will be then unveiled on the 27th of April, so real exciting, and this all lends itself around the We Love Our National Parks as well, lots of different planned activities, so lots of good stuff there. And then on Tuesday, I went to the Main Street Advisory Committee, really progressing on a lot of things. One of the biggest things that I think we've been tackling for well over a year and still trying to narrow it down, but that idea of what are the different options for downtown so that there can be actually a downtown district? Because obviously, as the downtown continues to thrive, and there's more things where, things to help support it and things, whether it be making decisions in regards to having security, maybe at some events or things like that, all of these type of things, and them as a group being able to make these decisions, and there's lots of different ways to do it. So still looking at some of those different options and trying to decide that. I will tell you at the very end, I mentioned that we chose the Caterpillar as our art piece, and I think everybody was super, super excited. They were really glad that we chose that piece. They thought that was a great asset to our community.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Hensley. Counselor Dominguez?
I had my first Alamosa Housing Authority Board meeting today, and it was very interesting. A few employees spoke. The maintenance man talked about how they got two new guys hired to fill some spots that they had in, in order to get some of the available housings that they have available. They're working on getting them done, and now they can move forward with that. They're working on getting a new vehicle for their fleet of vehicles, which is going to help them be more successful, too. They are on their way to getting a new executive director. I also noted that on this meeting, I sit, I go to a lot of board meetings and sit on board. I also noted that on this meeting, I sit, I go to a lot of board meetings and sit on board meetings, but I really admire the way the board handled their conversations. They brought it back, they didn't get off track. I was very impressed on how that board handled a lot of the hard conversations they had today. So I was very impressed with that board. Other than that, they had Kathleen is the new chair. They had a new chair today and Kathleen Luna is the new chair. Billy Yuleberry is the vice chair. So they went through that, they all accepted their nominations, are very excited. So there was really no bumpiness at all in that meeting. I was impressed and they had some very hard conversations today. So and I'll thank Rachel for sitting in on with me and helping me through that meeting today too.
Thank you, Counselor Dominguez. Counselor Jackie V Hill?
So I sat in the lead meeting on Monday. And basically, they presented the stats that they presented to us. And Clarissa was saying that they the numbers are starting to pick up again. There was a little bit of lull in the numbers of people that they had go through the lead program. She did say that they hired two new employees for the, I'm not sure what they were called.
Case managers.
Case managers, yeah. And it was informative, but short and sweet meeting. And but I don't know if that's the usual or, yeah, so.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Jackie.
I think the the major, just add one other thing is one of the consistent barriers or or challenges that the partners are facing is just transportation. There's just such a need to, in the valley, to get individuals to different treatments and and service providers. And and transportation remains probably the biggest hurdle.
Okay, all right, we don't have any more council comments. We have staff announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. As Harry makes his way up, I think Eric has a quick announcement as well.
I do, just an update on the city's water augmentation cases. We have reached a little bit of an impasse with the objectors and so we have set the augmentation cases for trial. Trying to schedule a three-week trial and coordinate nine different parties puts the trial in October of twenty twenty-six. So that's when we are set for trial. As you know, in the interim, our well pumping is covered by our participation agreement with subdistrict number six. I also engaged litigation counsel to assist with that trial because it's it's a significant undertaking that is more than my little office can handle. So Burns, Figa, and Will will be helping us out with that. Stephen Lenhart and April Hendricks. And that's what I got.
And that was anticipated with the funding that that council issued way back when was to include engineering, legal, as well as the purchase of the rights.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay.
For me, it's just an update on La Vida Avenue since it's has such a big impact on the community, just kind of keeping council up to date. We still are on schedule, even with the the storms this last week. We're kind of expecting another storm, probably Monday. But yeah, we'll start laying concrete down, hopefully Monday or the week of of next week, I guess. Pending the weather, of course, and still scheduled to pave April eighth. So we'll hopefully have that open up towards into that week. If not, the following week, we still have to backfill and and paint and stuff like that. So a little bit of that's weather dependent, but the project's moving along really well. Washington Avenue is where we're headed next. Haven't been able to nail down the date. Contractor's kind of moving around a little bit as he's going to go and do one other job he committed to. And we're still thinking right around the first of May, we'll we'll be on Washington. And of course, we'll be in contact with the school district and they can help help spread the word of, you know, traffic circulation and we'll do PSAs and stuff like that, so that's about it.
Okay, Council Hensley?
I'm just gonna say, it feels like, as somebody who drives by there, you were very thoughtful and it seemed very organized in the sense of lots of signage to help those businesses. Because obviously it is a real busy area. And obviously, I'm sure there's some inconvenience and I'm sure it's affected the businesses. But have you gotten feedback from the businesses that they also feel supported or?
I hope so. We haven't really received a lot. Mr. Owesley's reached out right in the beginning, asking for a different type of signage. Once we, you know, accommodated that, he really hasn't said much. We know it's impacting the businesses and we're doing everything we can to accommodate it, but it's it's so far has been pretty smooth, so.
Yeah, it just really feels like the direction. It's 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 something that's very clear on how to to maneuver through it. So anyway, good job.
I don't know if, Harry's never going to take credit for things. But they really did try to minimize the impact to where we had our contractor doing water connects, shut offs, all of that at night when the businesses are closed in order to not have disruption during business hours. And you were getting ready to say something, Harry, but.
No, it's fine. C dot probably is the biggest challenge through the project, but that is the result of of C dot in their coordination and and what their what their expectations were, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other staff announcements?
Nope, that is it.
Wow, I'm surprised. All right, good deal. All right, bring us down to council comments. Council V Hill, Council Krebs, Council Carson?
Just want to congratulate our new police chief, Mr. Dingfelder. And to all those folks who applied for the job, thank you. And to the committee who was put together to get this new chief. Good work and let's get to work.
Thank you, Council Jan V Hill, Council Krebs, and then Council Carson.
Thank you, Mayor. I recently attended an informational meeting from Parks and Rec concerning adopting a park or adopting a trail. Very organized, very well thought out, and I'm excited to be a part of it moving forward. So I urge everyone, you have a park or a trail that you're fond of. Please look into it. It's it's going to be a lot of fun.
Okay, thank you, Council Krebs, Council Cars.
I just wanted to tell staff a good job on picking Dean Felder as well. He's he's a solid guy. He's always seemed to be a really good cop and I think he was a good choice for chief. I wanted to thank P D. Somebody tried to steal me on Monday. Thank you. It was pretty, it was pretty weird. Call responder responded. I'm not sure why they targeted him, but it's weird. And so thank you guys for being there. Hang on to your kids and stuff's getting out of hand, guys. Yeah, they targeted like some ladies grabbed him and tried to take him. Sorry, I didn't mean to break down, but it's just kind of, it's been pretty terrifying week from that standpoint, you know. So yeah, man, just good, thank you guys for being there and and for working on that. But pretty scary. Thank you.
So sorry to hear that happen, Council Carson. And you and your family be on our prayers all the way through. And thanks, P D, for doing what you all did and. Well, I'll wrap things up then. I too wanted to thank the city manager for for and our team for taking their time to go through the selection process to where it wasn't like it was rushed in any way. And it seems like the committee, along with the city manager and the and the P D, did all that they can do to make sure that we got the the best candidate for this time. And looking forward to the city moving forward in positive light in the community as well with law enforcement. Thank you. That's it, this meeting is adjourned. You're welcome, sorry about that, Cars.